I would like to call to order the April 23th PCBA meeting. Rolko, please, Jen.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Here.
Commissioner Raich is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a forum.
Perfect. Let's, uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, the first item that we need to look at is the minutes from, wow, January 29th. We haven't been here for a while. Any corrections to the minutes as presented? If there are none, can I please set a motion to approve the January 29th PCBA minutes at 7:06?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. You good? Oh, you need the agenda?
I made an agenda for the 23rd.
We have an agenda for the 23rd.
There was not one in the pack.
There is no old business. We've got two cases of new business. The first one is a PCBA case number 25-03-SU. Uh, the applicant is, I'm just gonna skip all the ones and just go with Go Rentals, um, 750 Pinecrest in Prospect Heights. And the applicant is requesting a special use permit to operate a automobile rental business in the commercial wholesale and general services district per section 5-7-5C of the City of Prospect Heights. Uh, can I please set a motion to open case number 25-03-SU at 7:08?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, Rolko, please.
All righty. Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Do we have the applicant? Uh, I can swear you in. Um, do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. And if you could please, uh, tell us about your project.
Hi, good evening and, uh, thank you for the opportunity. I, my name is Raich Angelic and I represent Gorantalls. I'm a regional director for Midwest. With Gorantalls, our company is specialized in private aviation, um, providing the current all, uh, opportunity for, uh, private aviation. And we are on site with Ascension Global Services in Prospect Heights and Signature Aviation as well.
Okay, and, uh, so what is, uh, what, uh, what, which building are you, uh, what space are you trying to occupy and what, what, what will take place at that space? It's, that's not the retail space if I'm, okay?
That's gotta happen. 75, um, 750 Prospect, um, yeah, Prospect Heights.
Pinecrest.
Pinecrest, yeah.
Pinecrest, sorry.
No problem.
Um, it's just our, I mean, it's our, uh, regional headquarters. We are, we have, uh, offices and also we store vehicles that they are, because we have an indoor garage that we store those vehicles weather conditioned before they go out and rent.
Okay, so what kind of activities is it? And you said administrative activities in the office and then storage activities in the parking lot?
That is correct.
Okay.
Wait, in the parking lot or in the building?
Both.
Okay, and so how many, how many vehicles are you planning on storing?
It's over 10, um, anywhere between 20 to 40, because we, we, they're, they're always on rent, they come and go, so it's not that they're sitting.
The, the only reason that I'm asking is for, actually for two reasons. One, uh, and that's, that, that question is towards Director Peterson about parking spaces. Uh, and the second question is, I'm assuming those are some high-end vehicles, so they, they, with, you know, 40, whatever, 40, 50 vehicles were, uh, we could be looking at half a million dollars of, no, with, yeah, a lot of money in inventory basically sitting in, I drove by the place and it was just an open parking spot.
Yes.
Or a parking lot.
2.5.
Yeah, 2.5 or 5 million, right? If they're, if they're 100,000 each, 50, that's 5 million dollars worth of vehicles sitting in a parking lot right next to, and, you know, an apartment complex. Uh, I'm just kinda worried about, you know, criminal activity from, you know, from you losing cars and, and the other ten, because I'm assuming there's other tenants in that building, right?
Yes, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not aware of their activities, but, uh, yes, um, there are other tenants, uh, not in our building, but in other units of the building.
Right, right.
Um, to answer your question on activity, I did check with Police Chief Durman this week, and they don't have any reports of any criminal damage to property, anything at, all at the property in the last six months.
And not on the wood, um, we haven't been since we've been there, so, uh, and the building has all cameras around, um, so do we have inside the building?
What, what type of building besides that right now?
It used to house, um, but a, a bigger, um, military offices, um, was in there for a while. The other side has a, a couple of years ago, we did a soccer sports training, we did a couple of other special use permits for the 742 unit, um, and 748, but I did not, it had had some vacancies in that building for a while, but, and then your space was vacant for about a year and a half, and then I think the other one, 752?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was there.
There's, there's a lot of cars in the back of the building in a parking lot. It seems to be very, very, uh, pretty heavily occupied, maybe not the middle of the building, but, but towards the back of the building.
I drove by there before I came here, so they have plenty of parking. The backside of the building has a lot of parking, so I think there's about 20, I'm assuming 20 of your cars there, because there's a lot of Mercedes and Cadillacs. If you're Cadillac, there are a few Mercedes there right now. Um, so I just wonder, and parking is, is adequate? I, I don't see an issue with it, but I don't know if that limits other uses down the road and if that's an issue more for the landlord or us.
Raich, could you please, uh, explain to the zoning board what you explained to me about your agreement with the landlord on use of parking? Because didn't, there wasn't there a number that they kinda dedicated for the use?
There was not, because we have an inside garage, and the inside garage is about like 10, 15 spots, and then the outside, uh, the parking spot, like, I think they're like about 50, 60 spots, which we don't occupy, all of them, um, but there was no, any, we did not agree on number of vehicles that to have, and there's no issue, because other buildings, um, are just, um, I don't know what they do, they're, um, but they're just employees that did, they use the parking.
Then I miss, I think I misunderstood, uh, because at times you were saying that you would have up to possibly 40 in transition, you know, vehicles coming in, vehicles out, and that it was...
We will not have more than 40, but there was no, oh, you can only have 15 or 20, but up to 40, that's the limit.
Okay.
And the, the cars that you're talking about being the, in, inside the garage, is that in that same building?
Yes.
So that's included in the count of your total cars?
Total of 40, uh, 40 vehicles.
So worst case scenario, there's 30 cars, or there's, wait, there's 40 cars outside overnight. Worst case scenario.
Never be that number, because most of them are on rent when they go out.
Right, right, I'm just, again.
But I say that on them, right, there will be 30 cars outside, yes.
30 cars outside.
30 outside, 10 inside.
Right, so that's $3 million outside, sitting overnight. That's, that's the only issue that I see, uh, you know, I, again, it's, there is no fence, there is absolutely nothing around there.
Are they, are they, she though?
Yeah, well, it is if it impacts the, uh, the neighbors, right? If it, if the, if the criminal activity goes up, because, because, you know, we just put a, uh, lure in the, in the water, then it's, the neighbors are not going to be very happy.
You're not, you're, you're concerned.
I think, I think, a little history here, um, you've been in the building a little over a year, correct?
Correct.
What happened is, we discovered the large number of cars parked out there, and, uh, we're unaware and found out that they had occupied the building unknowing that they needed the business license or zoning approval. So they've been in there a year, and to date, you have not experienced any issues at all, and there's been times when there's, and if...
And most of the cars are parked at Hart, which is now Ascension Global Aviation, um, in their parking lot, because those are the vehicles they find out during the day or the next day, so, worst case, case that you will have like 20 vehicles parked outside, and that was like, you know, winter time and the, the aviation, um, business slowed down, but that was the higher number we ever had.
How long is the average lease? Is this something you just rent out for the day or of the car?
Oh, well, it depends, they can go day by day, or mostly it's like a three, four, five days rental, depends.
How does it work? Do they, if they fly in to the airport, then is there like a shuttle service that brings them over to your, um...
No, we are on site with Ascension.
I think they bring the cars to the airport.
Oh, I see.
We bring the vehicle, we bring it inside.
So at Ascension, I believe you have 10, anywhere between 6 and 10 vehicles at a given time, depending on what your rentals are for scheduled.
Correct, 10, 15.
They also do the same at Signature, which is on the wheeling side of the airport, but everything is rented through maybe a kiosk at those places, but the corporate office is here, and that's where the transaction comes.
Well, the good thing is, is that there's a police substation right down the street, right?
Block away.
You've never experienced anything blockily, um, and...
The building does have a security system, uh, does, um, the police chief is working with all the commercial and residential, uh, multifamily property owners on a private property enforcement agreement, so things such as vehicle stickers, uh, traffic violations, accident follow-up can be handled by our police department. So that's an added level of security that is added in, and they, they have 24 hours contact information, they have, um, done access to all the video equipment that is on the building.
How about, um, lighting outside? Is that adequate? I mean, what kind of outside lighting is there for, in the evenings?
Um, streetlights, and also the building has lights all around.
So you're not planning on any improvements to the building to, to satisfy this, this use? You're not, so, yeah, you're not planning on putting any additions to the security system or, you know, or like lights or things like that to satisfy your, your use, meaning to keep cars safe or to whatever, to...
Well, the, uh, the lights are already there.
Right.
Already exist. Camera, the security system already exist. Uh, that is on the landlord, we, that this is building, they're just renting the space. Uh, I can't change much, um, about that, but, uh, we have not experienced any unsafe activities around the building, and nor I or any of my employees feel unsafe around there. And we've been there most of the days, we are there till late nights.
It's just something that I, that I thought about, uh...
No, absolutely, so we just...
As soon, as long as you're satisfied and, and, you know, the city has, uh, you know, thought about it and it feels confident, then I don't have a problem.
The, there is a provision in the code, should there be any activity at the discretion of the building official, and for parking lots, we could require additional lighting, but to date, there's no, um, indicators that would warrant that at this time.
Got it. Okay.
And most of the nights we are there till 9, 10, and the private aviation is 24/7, and, um, some nights we're even there till like late in midnight, and never, I mean, I don't wanna jinx it.
Shoot, I don't wanna jinx it either.
I know what you're talking about, um, but never experienced anything, um, safe or suspicious around, and, uh, one time that, uh, we, uh, we received a fleet from a different state to accommodate, uh, a football team that arrived in Chicago, uh, and our employee were around there, just walking around the parking lot, waiting for a truck driver to, uh, truck to arrive, within five minutes, the police arrived and asked my employees, "What are you guys doing here?"
Wow.
And, uh, they called me right away and said, "I, I reunderrest, I like you're not." But yeah, I mean, I'm not very safe, and I, I live in downtown Chicago. I also feel safe there, but I do feel safe around here, so, um...
Another block for the city. She's good. Any other questions from the commissioners while we have the applicant here? Uh, thank you for your testimony.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody from the public that needs to address this case? Nope. We can have a discussion after if we need to, but I would like, uh, I would like a motion to close, uh, public hearing for case number 25-03-SU at 7:22.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Rolko, please.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Uh, now, I would like a motion to include to the public record the exhibits, there is not, there is no new exhibit, right? Uh, so the presented exhibits and the testimony presented this evening are to include it into the public record.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
One second.
Rolko, please.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Uh, that motion was at 7:23. Now, I would like another motion, uh, to recommend to the city council approval of case number 25-03-SU to issue a special use permit to operate an automobile rental business in the commercial wholesales and general service district per section 5-7-5C of the City of Prospect Heights zoning code.
I'll make the motion. All second?
Rolko, please.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
All right, okay. This will be on the city council agenda in this room at 6:30 PM on Monday, May 12th. That will be in front of the whole city council, discuss this, and have the, they'll take the recommendation of the board, and they'll hopefully get a vote that night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here for you, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, our second item is a PCBA case number 25-04-V. It's a public hearing. Applicant is Joey Pascucci at 697 Glendale Drive in Prospect Heights. And the description of the request is consideration of a variation to allow an approximately 300 square foot roof addition to a 720 square foot existing detached garage that exceeds the maximum allowed per section 5-3-4G lot coverage at the property in the city's R1 single-family residential district. Uh, can I please set a motion to open case number 25-04-V at 7:25?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Applicant is here, can I swear you in? And anybody else that wants to, uh, speak to the case? Uh, do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please, uh, name and address for the record, and then if you could tell us about your case, please.
Yes, my name's Joey, or Joseph Pascucci, at 697 Glendale Drive, Prospect Heights. Um, we have a garage, obviously, that is up there, um, and we built a overhang porch off the side of it, um, and obviously it doesn't approve with your standards. It was a, uh, project that was done back 2015, I believe it was, when it was actually done, um, and I had a conversation with Darrell Taylor, your previous, uh, inspector, and we had issues where the height of the roof of the garage was too high. We figured out during one of the inspections that the cement mason put one block too much of, uh, of the, you know, cement blocks at the base, so that through the height, it was like eight or 10 inches too high. We had to tear the whole roof off the garage, redo a whole new roof, um, and during, when we were working on that, uh, Darrell Taylor came out and we said, "Hey," we asked him verbally if we could put a, uh, porch off the side of it, just like a roof overhand. And he said, "Yes, as long as you don't put any concrete underneath it." Okay, no problem. We did it, we put bricks underneath there. That was 2018, and now, now it's, uh, been obviously seven years later, so we're asking for a variance to approve something that's already been built.
Okay. Is there any supporting documentation from, from back in, uh, when this took place, 2017, 2018? I'm not sure when, was it 2019 that it was finished?
Dates, uh, so, the only, the one document that I have, which is the final, okay, um, and talking with, uh, my, the builder that built it, um, he was there during the conversation, um, so I do know that the roof was lowered, Darrell Taylor came out before it was all shingled and everything, measured the height of it, and said, "Okay, you're good."
So, okay, so that was the final inspection?
You know, I'm getting conflicting stories by my builder, because I wasn't there for the final inspection, so I don't know exactly what was completed, but I do know that he asked to come out and inspect the height before we did anything more, and I believe what he did was, he put on the sheeting, tar paper, and then called for an inspection. That's what I believe from what he's telling me, because we're going back seven years ago now.
Right.
So he's trying to remember, and everybody's trying to remember, so documentation, I don't really have much.
Was that extension already on at that point?
Uh, I believe so. I believe so. I, I, again, I don't remember, because we had added that on there, but it was talked about when we had ripped the roof off.
Do you have a final inspection report?
I have...
Can we see it?
That copy, yes. It's just got, uh, simple and...
Anywhere else we see it?
You can pass it around.
Do you, do we have records of any other inspections from back there?
Um, we, we have inspections of the helicopter peers.
What's the date? What's the date?
Uh, the date for the, just for the record, the date is 8/28/18. Final on garage approved is from Darrell Taylor. We have the inspection report of the pre-pore, um, and there's, I don't, I've had a hard time locating any records of the roof inspection, and I knew it was there, because that's when the roof came off. When it was discovered that the roof was too, or towards the, actually completion of the existing garage is when they discovered the roof was too high. We had a long conversation in the office about options, and then, then next thing you know, we get a final, I was not involved in any further conversations other than they were gonna lower the roof.
Is this, is the, is the roof off the back that we're talking about?
It, it's off the side, let me, um, go to the next.
It's off the east side, so it's on my property.
So this, this, um, this is the existing, or this is the, this is what was approved for the garage, but in, there should be one in there for the proposed swimming pool?
Yeah, I see the swimming as well.
Okay, there should be one more.
Is this picture his garage?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the garage, the storage container and concrete pad are gone.
Okay, I was gonna ask that question.
Um, so, there should be a, a site plan, go up one, I think, yes, this one right here, open, if you can expand that, and go down to the lower left-hand corner. Would, this spring, Joey had applied for a swimming pool, um, on the property. During the plan review, uh, Inspector Hart plans, Examiner Hart, observed that the, this garage there and did not match what was on the 2018 permit and failed it. Okay, failed the plan review. Uh, we had a discussion about the situation and the consecu, and what, how we got to this point, um, and, um, so Joey's here to apply to account for the extra overhang. Not to speak poorly of a previous employee, but in the last, even as late as today, I discovered other files where incomplete records, incomplete notes, incomplete land reviews, not asking people to submit the proper documentation, um, came up again, and we've had, we had this at 207 North Gale with the garage that was built in the front yard that we had to go through the zoning. So I don't have other than here, you know, what was, been told to me and incomplete records what to go on. I spoke to the city attorney, who indicated because of the age, and he relied upon, the applicant has relied upon the, um, information given by the inspector to build this, and then has an approval of timing of that, um, and it's slightly larger than the total lot coverage allowed for an accessory structure, and it's roughly less than 100 feet, is what I'm estimating, that it's a little under 1,100 feet, I think, the whole roof structure is, that the city attorney thought, advised that if we were to accept this, it could be for a minor allowance over 1,000 feet with the conditions of no additional structures at all on the property. Secondarily, um, the, to the other side of the equation, if we were to not deny it and force this to come off, that the applicant, because he relied upon an active permit and the representative of the city under the color of his duties, could have a potential estoppel case against the city. Because he did, um, you know, expend resources and stuff to build something based on the authority of the inspector at the time. Uh, so, from a staff perspective, um, we're looking at the impact of the whole negative and, or to the whole property in there. The city has not received a single complaint about this property. Uh, the only time that anything came up was when I visited the site on the pool and we saw the, the storage container and the pad, and he removed it immediately, and so he's complied. The property to the south is a seven-acre floodway that will, can't be built, and the property to the west is a, in a flood zone and cannot be built upon. So on that, the impacts to the community from a staff perspective are minimal. So the question comes, and right now, based on the incomplete records, I don't have a definitive, I can't answer a definitive question, what was said, when it was said, and why things were.
Well, just, if he has a final inspection.
Yep.
This roofing must have been done when they roughed the house. This roofing must have been done when they roughed the house. I mean, when they re-roofed the house, or reframed the house with that lower thing, I assumed this was done at the same time, so.
The garage.
The garage, yeah, I'm sorry, when, when he did the garage. So, I don't anticipate them adding, it'd be just too hard to add it, or, so I, I feel like this was inspected, and it's been passed, and it's something that our former inspector let go and hold him accountable now.
Well, we can't ask him because he's not here, right?
Yeah, right, but based on what I'm seeing, if I see a final inspection, that's, that's your last walkthrough. You've done it, you've seen it, it's done, you know what I'm saying?
But we don't know when the final inspection was, as applicant said, he, he wasn't there, so his, his contractor measured the height of the roof, right?
When you do the final inspection, that structure's done. That roof structure's done, with the overhang. They're not building it afterwards. It's integral to the roof right now.
And my inspector did meet and signed off on this, indicating that he approved it.
Yeah.
Let me, can I ask you about the patio? The patio sits in a flood zone, and it's flood zone approved. I'm not sure, you could describe what that means?
So, when we had to build the garage, we had to go through proper flood channels, which the bottom of the garage has flooded through vents. So, if there's any type of, for the hundred-year floodplain, from what I remember, it's seven years ago. But there's vents all around the base of the garage, so water can flow, sorry, through the whole bottom of the garage. And the patio that's underneath there is brick, not cement, like he had said. It did, you know, one of the things that he had said, and it fits the floodplain.
So, the pavers sit on what?
The pavers sit on whatever, sand.
Crabble.
And, and what do the columns sit on? The columns that over, on piers, so on concrete?
Helical piers, I remember this case. He had to do.
What's a helical pier?
Helical piers, like 15-foot concrete pilts.
And we, we do have a, again, don't put concrete underneath the overhang, is, that's what Darryl said.
Well, that's, the garage is sitting on helical piers, not the overhang.
The columns that overhang the roof, what do those columns sit on?
Those sit on concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's concrete underneath the overhang. This, this is a tough one for us, because the piece, so the city is asking DCBA to approve something that was missed by the city. We had nothing to do with this, right? So, we, we've approved the garage to be built in a, in a flood zone, and we approved it, and there were plans, and everything was great, and then we don't hear anything for, what, seven years?
Almost 30 years.
And all of a sudden, now we're being asked to approve something that was missed by the city. I don't believe that's my responsibility to approve that. I don't see.
Just to clarify, to answer your question and clarify, so, the flat part, the patio part, could not be cement, is what was told to me. He said, put it in brick so that water can percolate and flow through, okay? That, that's what was told to me, that's why it was done, the way, also, I would have put cement underneath there, if he would have said you could do cement.
I think for the chairman's benefit, concrete flat work is allowed in a type floodplain. There's no structures allowed in a floodway. This is a floodplain, so if it's at grade, you can't have a pier to grade, it just can't act as a damming force. I think the phrase that Darryl used, which I quoted in there, was that he was trying to have it impervious, so it did not act as, because Joey had, during this project, had to come up with compensatory storage on his lot. Everything had to be built so it could be a flow-through. That patio actually flows through, so it's not an obstruction. Whether it was on piers, helical piers, concrete piers for the overhang, those types of structures meet the flood zone, construction types for that type of flood zone.
Okay. But they do not meet the, the coverage?
No, what, you're, helical piers are round, concrete piers that go into the ground.
I understand, I understand all of that, but because, but because there are piers there, this garage, this 720 square foot garage now becomes, I don't know, roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, an 1,100 square foot garage.
No, roughly, no.
Yes, it does.
It's, it's impervious roof lock coverage, okay?
How, how big is the auxiliary building?
The, the largest accessory structure.
No, no, this one.
This one's a little over 1,100 square feet.
There you go.
The roof is, right?
The roof, the roof covering. It's, no, no, the, the garage itself, the structure of garage is still 720. The footprint of the garage is 20 by 16, I think, or 30 by 16, I think. I'd have to look at the plan, it's on one of the details here.
That was.
Thirty-six by 20. So, the garage hasn't changed, it's the, it, coverage of the roof, now you have 1,000 square feet of lock coverage. And a roof structure accounts to lock coverage.
Well, the way the code is written, you can have a...
It, it says here that we're approving a variation to allow approximately 300 square feet roof addition for a 720 square foot building, which is, which is, which exceeds the maximum allowed. So, we are allowing, correct me if I'm wrong, if we're, if we're just allowing coverage, then, then we don't have an issue. If we're allowing, you know, a 300 square foot addition to a 700 maximum auxiliary building, well, then we do have a problem.
There's two issues at hand. One, you have the size of a single roof structure, okay? Because of the, and you've got to remember, the structure, the garage itself is 7, a footprint of 720, they're allowed an E, so you're naturally going to be a little bit over. But for maximum lock coverage under five, three dash four, the maximum total lock coverage for all accessory structures is 1,000 square feet. So, we've got a dual issue. We've got one, which is a singular structure of that size, and then secondarily, we have, it exceeds the maximum allowed for the maximum number of accessory structures that are allowed. We went through that whole exercise with the, with the, last year, when we went through.
So, so, so to basically put it in simple words, it's 720 plus 200 plus 80. That's where the 1,000 square feet comes into play. So, that's our coverage, but these are, those are the three maximum auxiliary structures that we are allowed on a lot. A 720 structure, a 200 structure, and an 80 structure.
Correct.
Well, at this point, we have eleven-hundred structure, one structure.
Oh, no, 1,020.
Roughly 1,020.
Okay, something like that. I mean, we don't have, we don't have.
Twenty square, 20 square feet over.
Okay.
If you look at this.
No, it's a little bit more than that, but not much, but.
It's 1,150, I think.
Yeah, it's.
He has seven.
Well, no, when you, when you, when you add, add up the, 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 if that was a separate gazebo, we'd count that as a separate print. So, when you add up the whole area, we do it for lock, overhead lock coverage, impervious coverage on this. At, at, at this point in time, we, the, the issue comes down to, is the ZBA comfortable with exceeding the maximum lock coverage of all, which would be the, the 1,000 feet? And then, is this the hardship because of the staff, the, giving the authority to build it originally? Just looking at, this is a singular granting of a little over 120 square foot, 115 square foot lock coverage variation.
Do you know how much the actual dimensions are? I don't have the plate, but one document of ours is 320, and one says 395.
Uh, there's, there's, the issue is, is the civil engineer for Mr. Pescucci's pool put a lock coverage table together, which does not match any of the numbers. And I talked to Mr. Toblerman about his calculations, and I still can't figure out how he came to that for the garage structure. He's calling that garage structure almost 890 square feet. It's on the exhibit four, I believe it is. Let me find it here. It's C3, it's exhibit number four in the packet. In the lower right-hand corner, he calls the detached garage 850 square feet. The detached garage is not 850 square feet, it's a 30 by, 36 by 20. We've measured it, we've approved that.
What is exhibit four? Is, it's?
This shows that, how that patio, it doesn't show.
I know, but what kind of document is it? It's not a plate survey, it's just a sketch.
It's, it's the site plan zoning lock coverage calculations that his engineer did for the pool. So, this is the document that was submitted with the current pool permit application, where his engineer calculated lock coverages, that.
Okay, I, I had, so, again, these, these drawings don't make much sense to me. I'm looking at this drawing here, which I, I'm assuming this is a.
Plateau, an old plate of survey.
So, this is a plate of survey?
That was an old plaque from the file.
Okay, so, in this plate, there is a shed in here, I don't know if that's still existing, that's gone.
That was eight, 10 years ago.
And, and this, here, it shows this driveway very close to the, to the lot line, but in this one, it doesn't. It shows far away from a lot line. So, there are discrepancies here.
This, this, this was removed, that was part of the conditions of the original variation that was granted in 2017. To, one of the issues was, is because of all the asphalt and concrete up here, to allow them to get the two-foot setback here, the ZBA put a part of condition of approval that he had.
Yeah, that was the original owner had that, we had removed that.
He bought the house with that extra bump out, and so the, the condition was that he had to remove that section, which he did.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's why there's a discrepancy. This is not a current plat.
Okay.
Okay, he did comply with that. And so, what this shows is the area of the pavers, and there's a dotted line, and shows what the current conditions of the covered patio are in relationship to the garage. And that's why this was in here.
For accurate numbers, should we have an actual plate of, plate of survey? This doesn't have any dimensions on it, right? So, we're not really sure what we're looking at.
Do you know how much your overhang is?
Uh, the overhang was, I believe it was 10 by length, but then you've got the E's, which stick out, I don't know, 12, 15 inches.
So, 10 by, 10 by 36? So, they have 360 on this, so that sounds, that jives with what he's saying.
Yeah.
So, the garage is 720, and the overhang is 360.
So, you're at 1,080.
1,080. So, it's 80 square feet of total lock coverage extra, minus the fact that it's one structure as opposed to three separate structures, is what you're looking at.
And keep in mind, it's only an overhang. It's not like there's walls or anything.
Understood.
It's just an overhang.
So.
But, but by that, here's, the problem is, by that code, it's a, it's an auxiliary building of exactly 10, what did we say?
1,080.
10,080 square feet.
1,080.
1,080 square feet. That's what it is, by code. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director Peterson.
Correct.
Correct. So, so the maximum that we, the maximum that the code allows is 1,000, that's for three buildings, one building 720, one building 200, one building 80. You can't combine them, you can have three. And you can, you combine the, you combine the square footage for the lot coverage.
Correct.
So, so we have two issues, that we, we've got 80 feet over the lot coverage, and then we have, what was the number again? 360?
360.
360 square feet of, over the size of the auxiliary building.
For the pool project, do you have any structures planned for that?
No.
And, and the, based on, based on that he's maximized the lock coverage, we couldn't, if this is approved, we wouldn't approve it, but we've also requested that it be a condition of the permit, that no other.
Structures.
Structures are permitted. You know, his, his lot has been maxed out. We did have one case back in 20, early 17, which was the Drury Lane, the Papa Nicholas Pool House, that was about, that was granted a variation, but he asked for that before it was built. I think that's part of a issue.
No, he was on two lots, right?
Yeah, plus.
He had an acre.
Additional lot.
But, yeah, he had the second half acre lot, but.
Is there any type of a, a structure for the mechanicals for that pool? Or will that be in the garage, or, you know, like for the, the filter, the heater?
That's off to the, the east side of the property.
There's a patch, there's a patch.
Just a pad?
Yeah.
So, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, on, for our code, if we just, a patio, but not a roof structure, is there any limit of how many square foot of a patio we can do?
No, that is one of the exceptions in the lock coverage. Sports courts, patios, certain decks are exempt from the lock coverage calculations.
Which doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
I didn't, I didn't write it, yeah.
In this case, we have just the opposite. We have no patio, but we have the roof. Because it's the pavers.
Yeah, the pads, yeah, but the pavers can be considered a patio.
We have a lot of patio, we have a lot of driveways. We barely have any grass on this, on this lot.
We don't have the problem, they can be just solid pavers, too. I mean, at the end of the day, it seems.
Can I add something, too? Whether this makes anything, a couple of years ago, I was asked to be a part of a committee for you guys, to update your guys' codes, and I spent, obviously, my own time, a couple hours of my own time, and sat with the, was it the lawyer, I believe, from the company for the?
Was it the cannabis one, or was it the?
No, that was the other one I was asked to do.
But was, the truck, the?
No, this was the one about a year ago, because you guys are rewriting.
Oh, rewriting of the city code.
The city code, exactly.
Yeah, the consulting film that, from that, helping rewrite it.
Yeah, and I was a part of that, so I, I offered my time to help you guys out as well. Just throwing it out there, I, you know, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I'm a business owner in town, so.
I love your garage, just for the record. Patio, I love it.
Thank you.
I.
I know what the next request is.
My family loves it as well, and I did try to my house. I mean, I really did.
I had a shed on the mic.
So, I think the, from the, the information I received from the attorney is, the applicant, based on his testimony and based on what he presented, acted in good faith under the direction of the city employee, okay? So, from a staff perspective, then I take a look at if they're comfortable, if the attorney's comfortable with the condition of not to exceed, and we are not supposed to use these as precedent-setting examples, we take each case on the face of the case, and then, then to look at the surroundings of where the negative impacts to the rest of the neighborhood, because that's one of the other conditions, is, does this, is this disruptive to the character of the neighborhood? For seven years, it hasn't been disruptive to the character of the neighborhood. And the reason we're here is because it was discovered during our functions here. If we had the same level of detail requested at the time the change was taken, this would have been a different discussion and would have been probably back here at that point in time. Or the question would have been, do you go for a variation to allow, leave the original height? Okay? But those steps never happened because he relied on the actions of a government official.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you said you guys had inspections for the helical?
We've got the, we've got the certified reports of for the helical piers.
So, these helicals were obviously put in.
At the time of the foundation, you had that?
All at the same time.
Do we have that information?
It's a, it's a, I can, I can.
Let me get to my point here. The helicals were all put in at the same point. They were all inspected at some point.
Yes.
They were all, these, the overhang are on helicals, so obviously.
That's not what Joey testified to, because you said they were just on concrete piers, correct?
The garage is on helicals, the overhang is, yeah, because that's just the four, four posts on, on piers.
Are those on helical piers, too? Those four posts?
Honestly, I don't remember. It's, it was seven years ago.
I would, I would.
I don't think so, but.
The reason I'm saying that is if those were inspected, that means, that would tell you the inspector noticed the helicals outside of the, the footprint of the garage that was supposed to be there. If he didn't pick it up then, and then he finalized it, that would tend to believe the story of, he approved the overhang as long as it wasn't concrete. That lets the story be incorrect.
My, my assumption, and this is only an assumption based on timing, is if he was out there at some point in time after the helical piers were certified and installed for the foundation of the garage, and it was discovered after the roof, you know, the building was pretty much framed, you wouldn't go back and put in a second set of helical piers.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, he the the way that I and I've listened and I've talked to folks and I've tried to go back through the record is that it was allowed verbally to go in, the piers were put in probably, I don't know, they were approved by the inspector at the time of final, that they were satisfactory.
I have a couple of comments. One, so another thing, like we brought up, it said, it seems that the roof is integral, correct? It's it's not seen together. It's an integral roof. The framing is all consistent. Yeah. So it seems like it was done at the same time. The final was signed. So two comments I have. One is it's more it's almost more like grandfathered in, because it's something that it's nonconforming, but it was done thinking that it was conforming. So it's almost like we could consider that we're like grandfathering it in. But the one thing, another condition that I think we should consider is that the variance is only for this structure and this owner, because typically the variances go with the property. So if you sell the property, then somebody else could put an eleven hundred square foot structure, because that's what's approved. So I would say it has to be specific to this situation.
I I think to address that is that the overhang can never be closed. You know, it has to remain an open patio cover.
Well, I'm talking about if they would tear it down and put up a different structure.
Got it. I s- I see. That's where if it gets torn down, they can't go back, because that's only.
The fact that eleven hundred square feet of.
They'd have to comply with the requirements of the zoning code at the time. That could be, it's only for this, it doesn't run with the land, it runs with this owner.
Right.
But that's not really a true statement either, because if he sells it and other people move in and they don't do anything with it, it's not about, you know, it's.
Then it becomes a lot of being here.
I think the condition is is that at such times that the garage has to be demolished or changed, then they have to revert back to the requirements of the code.
Right, okay, so it would be specific to this structure, not this owner.
Yeah.
If it's if we're saying that it's grandfathered in, isn't the, wouldn't the permit be granted? Now, why wouldn't the variance if it's if variation, if it's grandfathered in? Could it be handled by a lawyer in a different way, where it doesn't need the PCBA approval because it already happened in the past? He could write it up so that it's this is this is the case. It's 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 today. This goes back seven years and we there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about it. And it's the this structure is grandfathered in.
But the the issue that when I asked the question of the attorney was is that it's contrary to the original approved plans.
So we can't say that it's grandfathered in, right? Because we we're approving it today. So so.
And so the the thought in the discussion was that how far off is the overall lot coverage? And a hundred square feet, a hundred and fifteen max if we run it, or eighty, whatever the number is, is are we satisfied to grant a variation for total lot coverage with the combined structure with the conditions that it, if something like that happens to that garage, it has to revert back to the standards of the code and that no other structures could be put on one? And it can't be enclosed, right?
Correct. Again, the lot lot coverage, I can see we're we're eighty over lot coverage, but what I what I have really hard time seeing is is the, uh, you know, you let whatever, uh, one thousand eighty square foot building, there were there were, there is not a building like this in the city today, auxiliary building. There is not one. I don't know of one.
No.
So this is this is the only building in the city and we're approving it seven years later.
Well, this is the only city that we need, that's come to our attention. This has got caught.
Well, we don't, I mean, it's, you don't know that.
I know from a, I know. We have not, we have not, we have not made a, we have not approved a variation for a thousand square foot building.
We are, I don't disagree with you on that. I think we have to look at the the circumstances of why we're approving this is because he was given permission to do it. And if you believe he was, then uh, based on that, we give the variation. That it comes out of that. If if you feel that he was allowed to do this back in the day, and to me, it feels as those structures built integral, he has proof, the fact that he has that document means a lot, because most people don't save that document. Tells you that he had, the bill is signed off on this.
Okay, so.
And then.
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate. If it goes to if it goes to court and and the inspector gets subpoenaed and he has a different story, what do we do then?
Probably go to court if we.
Because if it, because if we deny it and and we get in the city, that's the that's the whole issue, right?
I will tell you, I made a phone call to the inspector and he doesn't recall. He goes, whatever I wrote down.
Which is.
That's, and he's been retired for four and.
He's what, seventy-five?
No, he's 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 out of state and he's gone on with his life and what he remembers and doesn't remember, I can't talk to, I don't know. But when I asked him the question, he's like, I don't know, I just remembered he had the, he may have taken lower the roof. That was his only comment, because we made a lower roof, but he didn't recall anything else about it.
And you lowered the roof like eight inches, you said?
It was one block.
Yeah, so.
Whatever the height of a center block is, I I don't remember, is it eight, ten inches? Whatever it was, is exactly that. We figured it out.
But why did you decide to extend the roof at that time? So you lowered the roof by a by a foot and then you extended it, making the pitch even flatter? I mean, why at that time?
Because we were like, it was thought about and it was an afterthought. And now we looked at it and said, we gotta tear the whole roof off. This would be great to have that. And it was brought up in conversation and he's like, yeah, it's an overhang. I mean, it was basically like nothing was thought about of it other than, you know, no idea. Just make sure you don't put concrete underneath there. It's gotta be brick so that it can be in the flood zone was the only thing I was saying.
So is was the definition ever changed in those seven years for, you know, accessory building, like if there was an overhang, no walls, no concrete floor?
No, this is and this is, we've had a couple of other instances where an individual has interpreted the code the way they saw it, based on the conditions he saw without checking.
So the code hasn't changed?
Nope.
Or the definition?
The definitions and the code has not changed. And that's the quandary that brought us here is because based upon the twenty seventeen approval and what's there today, it doesn't match. Okay? And we're going on the basis that the record and some of the recent history of other cases that we've come across, the Gale Court, the one on Ellen Street, we've got a couple of other, I discovered one today on Olive. So some of the behavior during that time period and all of them are the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe of these cases is that he was making decision, decisions were being made without verifications.
So how many more are common to this PCBA?
I have no idea. And again, at that time, we were dealing with um, Jolly Fun House, the Lexington, we started getting into some of the other major cases. So I you trust that a person with twenty-five years worth of experience to make the decisions on that. And that's the, and I, believe me, this is not something I I take, but I think that if we if they come, ZBA is finally allowing the the lot coverage expansion similar to what we did for um, Papa Nicholas. And even with the extra lot that was still, he exceeded for that pool house and the height of the cupola. It's a one time and it's only restricted to this and it's not precedent setting. And then we put those conditions in and then this moves forward.
So, yeah.
Is there a reason to put in that condition about the floodplain standards have to be maintained as well? I mean, because we're talking about it can't be concrete, it has to be pavers.
It could be concrete.
The thing is, is a patio in the in a, a that floodplain can be, you can have a driveway, you can have a parking lot in a floodplain, as long as it doesn't impede the flow of and cause a dammed situation. So I don't really see the the issue in closing that outdoor patio, putting a screen system on it would, because now you've got something that acts as a dent and has to be maintained as.
So it's it's the flow, it's not the permeability that we're talking about.
Correct. And I think this is where the inspector at the time was a little misinformed and gave his advice the wrong way or stated something that may not be totally accurate.
There's a mighty driveway with pavers, but it's not permeable.
That there are nonpermeable pavers.
Most dr- most pavers are not permeable. You have, they're like, they have to have gaps, you have granule, those are filled with sand, which you fill with sand, they're they're not permeable. So I doubt these are permeable pavers as it is. So if you switch to concrete, it wouldn't make.
So I'm not, from a from a staff perspective, we're not concerned about the flood zone construction other than the actual garage structure itself, which we've already gone through that and that was built to the standards as applied for. Um, the the pool deck has been reviewed by our flood manager and that's all that complies with a structure in a floodplain. Now, it's a maintenance issue with him, should water come up and dealing with that, but it does, it's a it's a it's a permitted improvement in the zone because the water can rise and fall. He just has to deal with the maintenance side of it at that point in time. It doesn't impede the flow of the water. The overhang does not impede the flow of the water. It's it's just how it applies to the our maximum requirements for the for lot coverage.
So could we have a an official plat of survey, uh, signed with condition by the lawyer that says this is this is the way it's done, it's not, nothing is changing here, uh, and it's approved as drawn instead of instead of issuing variations and and things of that nature?
If you would like.
I mean, if the if the city is happy with 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 the construction of everything on this lot and we know it's good, that that's great, um, then we can have, we can have a document to that to not to set precedence for the, the next guy comes over and says, oh, this, Joey has this grandiose, that's going to be me, by the way.
Here's, I can't answer that question. What I would suggest, if you would need me to get more information, is to be specific with some questions and direction and we can continue this until next month.
I mean, I would, I mean, uh, you know, I'm just one person here, but I think that if the if if the legal counsel, uh, came back with a more creative way of, hey, this is beautiful. Your house is beautiful. It's beautiful. There's no doubt about it. Uh, it's it's great and it sounds like it's good for you, for the neighbors. We want you to keep it. I would love to see a way, a different way to keep it.
I think there's a hardship proven already. And we, that's what we can both agree on. The hardship is that, again, if we believe individually that he was given permission by inspector to do this overhang and he did it on that faith and it was built all at one time and he got his final inspection, we're now asking him, the hardship's given that he was given permission to that. That's that's what allows us to do that. That's my opinion. And I don't, I think that makes not having him come back to do all this, I think that's allows us to, and we keep it to this property. Someone else comes for this, we can hang our hat, okay, well, Joey did this. Well, Joey's got permission for those accidentally chose proof that you had this. This man has a document that says he has a final inspection that's been proven. The the next person would have to have something similar.
Next person comes in and does it before he, you know, it sounds like we're 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 leading more store asking for forgiveness than allowing for permission.
This isn't asking.
Uh, the previous case was the same thing, that uh, then they've been operating out of the building for. Okay, whatever. So we we love to, we love to believe the the evidence, but we have nothing, there's nothing supporting it. It's it's just a testimony. And we have, and we only have one sided testimony.
You have a final inspection document.
Would it be worth going back to the attorney just to get asked a question again if, since there is a final inspection that was approved, if there's some way internally it could be handled instead of variation?
Again, if it's a, if the final inspection is the document, why have a variation?
Well, here's 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 the issue is that the variation protects the applicant in the future, should anything help happen, because anybody at any point in time without that formally done can have the same argument and he'll be standing here right in front of a different board.
But he could have, he has the same thing. He's got the final inspection. I mean, he would have the same document.
He'd have the same documents. He'd have the same presentation. That doesn't change. The only thing that changes is if if it's not ratified or verified in a variation, because it's still the variation to the structure on the land, I may not be here with the history. The other plan viewer maybe not be here with the history. And at such point in time, a different zoning board could say, hold on a second, you just built this without. And then now it becomes a question, you built it against the approved plan, so it can't be considered legal nonconforming, because it was never made legal to begin with. It just wasn't a complete to there. That's the, and and without some finality in this, whether it's an approval of of the lot covered or denial, and then it would be up to the council to possibly overturn it. If you want more information, I have no problem asking the attorney to get more clarification. I just leaving it open ended is not a solution.
What's the concern of giving the variation?
Setting the precedent.
The issue.
For one. For two, this this board, this PCBA goes down as a body that approves previous, you know, seven year old cases based on uh, verbal evidence with with zero documentation. Nothing is documented. We just, we just say, ah, sounds good.
Well, he's got the final permit.
The final.
Right. So that's a, so that's a great thing. If there is a fine, if if we if we say that the that the final approval is 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 a legal document and it's and it's, you don't need anything else, then we don't need a variation. It's listen.
Your argument said, your argument, Menico, said, we're giving a variance without any documentation. That is not true. We're giving a variance on a document, the final inspection.
It it doesn't, it, a case does not need a variation if it's been approved and that document is good enough.
No, 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 hold on a second. No, 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 no. It is not approved based on that, what that, I'd have to go back and look and say, what was the approved plans? The approved plans was for seven hundred twenty with a two foot overhang and that's what the approval is. And then it would be back to the situation. Still, the the structure is still nonconforming. Okay, that that's the reason we're here.
Normally, you would go, you would require a set of drawings to, in addition to the actual drawings that were approved originally for the change, and it should have gone through.
There there was a number of mistakes that were done. And just because there are mistakes, and I hate to say it, when the city makes a mistake, we can't always go back. That's part of law. You know, we get a bite at her at the apple and if it's wrong, then sometimes we have to deal with it. And that's what the part of this is.
To deal with this, to, because there was obviously mistakes made all the way around. But we all agree on that.
And and, you know, we we now, there's a set that, there's no field changes. That came down when, you know, we started seeing some other things. There is not a field change that goes without a written request for a field change. We don't do this because we've had too many during that period of time where decisions were made without the supporting backups, just that everything would be fine, when in reality, there should have been none given, it should have been, came here back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And that's been an administrative change, it's been a process change, but, you know, to handle it, but that was supposed to have been the procedures being followed at that time as well. I just, and I feel bad because it was under my watch, but you trust the people you have working for you. And, you know, we do have a couple of other cases that, you know, could warrant it. The one thing with this one is he did go through the permit process. He did go to previous variation. If he hadn't done that and we just went out there and found this, this is a totally different argument. Okay, this is a totally different discussion.
When, if, in what case?
No, if if Joey hadn't come for the variation to put the garage in originally, if he didn't come through and go through the permits and, you know, the scenario, someone built it and then come in after the fact, well, if they built it without a permit, that's a totally different surgery. That's a self create.
I hate to say it, but that pad in the back of the garage was done without anything, if I'm not mistaken.
That was done at the port. I believe it was...
That was after the fact.
Yeah, that actually had, yeah, that was done after.
Was a pad, what was wrong with the pad itself?
No, the pad is, because it... It's in the utility easement, it also had the storage container, which, when he was made aware of it, when we found out about it, we informed him, it was gone immediately.
I get it, but it was done without a permit, so this is where, you know, the argument, if, because Director Peterson says, if the garage was built without a permit, it would have been a different discussion. It's not really that much different. The 720 garage was built with the permit, but the 360 was built without a permit. You know, so was also the pad in the back and the container, so the pad and container are gone.
You know, the difference is, is he had a permit and he asked to change that, and a field decision was made. The pad in the back was never even asked for, so that one went away. There's a, there was a detached garage on Elm and Viola, or over there, where we just made the guy cut his whole garage in half and move it. He came in to ask for a variation after, and we made him change it because he...
Elm and Ridge.
Elm and Ridge. We just did that, we did, we had a guy over on school, South School Road, that decided to add 200 additional square feet onto an existing 720 square foot garage. Yeah, closed garage. So we've made people cut parts off, move foundations, you know, so when we find violations that were done without permits, such as the pad and the storage container, we gave the rightful correction notice, and the resident corrected it. So those, you know, coming to us to try and get a variation without having first the approvals and the actions is a totally separate situation. And I understand your position that it's now an after-the-fact change? But I don't have...
It's not only that, it's also the fact that, you know, that after the fact change, or the, you know, mistake by the city gets asked to correct seven years later. I'm saying that there's gotta be a way to do it legally to where it doesn't require a variation.
Without changing the whole city code, which is gonna need a text amendment?
I don't know. I'm saying, I'm saying is that, you know, that the attorney suggested that he goes for a variation. Okay, does he have any other suggestion?
But that's why I'm here, is for a variation, because that's why...
Right, but if you were here, if you were here asking to build this garage today with the extension, and you'd be asking for a variation, I am pretty sure there's no way that it could be approved, because there is not, there is not a hardship. So right now, the hardship is that you were told that something was okay to do, right?
By a city employee.
Exactly. So that's what, that's a verbal, that's a verbal statement. Right, again, it would be great if the final could be used as a legal document, and it says that it's approved, seven years later, there's nothing to do, there is no variation required, there is nothing to do.
Last time I looked, this is a legal document by the project.
Yeah, but the only problem is, it's a legal document against the plans that were submitted to the city, and the plans that were submitted to the city don't reflect today's condition.
The only way to make this, the zoning deficiencies, the zoning issues legal, is to grant the variation. It can't be done administratively, otherwise I'd be making approvals to everything that comes in, or had, you know, and then what, every resident would be asking for the same relief, or would be asking for stuff. This is one that, we granted him a variation. He had very, he went through the process very specific, it was a very detailed hearing.
It cost me a lot of money.
That doesn't...
To conform to all of the stuff.
And he actually went through and got the building permit, okay? So he scheduled the inspections, he presented that. The only fault in this is a verbal approval of a request after we had called them out on a height vari, a height issue on the garage. And then, because he brought the height into requirement, the inspector didn't do the next step and check that it needed to have the zoning stuff for the lot coverage for the roof structure. And that's why we're here, and the only way to make, it can't be something that can be just signed off on by an attorney, it's, I just can't sign off, it's not an administrative approval, that's why we're here. I would like to make it as easy as possible, I don't necessarily...
I would like to also, so what I'm afraid of is that there's going to be another case like this, that will come in, there was an omission by the inspector, and another one, and we're going to be put in the same situation. So basically, there is, so we have, we have zero argument, that the hardship is award of a city employee, and we take that as, that is the hardship, and there's nothing to do, then we don't have a case, right?
If the council leaves that and votes it down, then he still has the right to go to the council and present his case, and then he has other choices after the fact. And there's a lot of cases out there where, once a city grants a permission, and then it goes to court, it usually gets overturned at a huge expense because of the theory of estoppel, which means that, once you've granted the position, the permission, you've had your bite at the apple, you've done the things that are right, he relied on that, extended it, and now is harmed by the reversal of that discretion. So at some point, we're talking about 100 and up to 100 square feet of lot coverage, or 80 square feet of lot coverage. And the fact of the matter is, is up until this point in time, as I read the file, every step was followed the city code except for one. Other cases we've had are, they've never asked for, and I don't see those types of things coming.
Can we rewrite the variance to say that the only variance is 80-foot access for lot coverage, and that's what we approved?
Well, except...
But it's a two-part...
We keep saying, we keep talking about lot coverage, but we omit to say that we've also had a building that's in excess of 360 square feet.
It's a two, it has to be a two-part, because the garage, the garage structure itself is 720, that's not changing, but a singular roof is now 1,080, that's part of the structure. And so it has to be looked at both.
Okay, but we keep only saying about 80 square feet of lot coverage?
But, okay, I see where your issue is, is that you're afraid that we're gonna, because we've denied people that wanted 900 square feet, we've denied people that wanted 880, we've denied a couple, the one guy that wanted his workshop over on Alton over there.
I mean, if we say yes, basically to the hardship of, you know, award of applicant against the word of a city employee that's not here anymore, that sets a precedence, that's done. Then we have no, then we have absolutely no argument to deny any other case.
But actually, you said you didn't talk to the employee, right? You weren't there, your builder talked to the inspector? Correct. So it's third part, so it's...
So at this point in time, there's, to wrap, kind of keep moving this up, because we're doing a big circle right now, unless anybody else has anything they want to add, I'd like to hear it, is, choice is continuance, we can get some more...
But what does continuance give us? What do we get? Do we get more documentation, or?
A, we could try, search more, but I don't believe there's any more documentation to be found, but you had indicated that you wanted to find out from the attorney a different opinion, if there's a different way to handle this.
Well, you kind of shut that down by saying that the only way to do it is by a variation.
I wouldn't have...
I don't want to bring the applicant here unnecessarily, I mean, it's a waste of time. So if the attorney exhausted all the possibilities, and the only, the only way is the variation, then there is no reason to ask him again.
I asked the question, and that's why the answer I got is...
Can I make a, let's close the public hearing, let's not just give us our opinion, because we're just gonna go back and forth, and then give us our...
Yeah, close the public hearing at this time, because it's not really, it's not really...
We have no more questions for him.
It's not really a testimony, it's just our feelings and the beat at this.
All right, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Can I please have...
Boy, ask if anyone else in the public, because there's gentlemen.
Sir, would you like, anybody else would like to speak to the case? Um, if there is no other testimony, can I please have a motion to close case number 2504V at 8:25 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Rocco, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Zschevsky.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye. So you can have a seat. Thank you.
Staff does have three exhibits that we'd like to add to the exhibit list. One is the approved engineering plan for permit 2018-40, which shows the engineer approved for the original site plan of the, that was used as part of the ordinance, O 1722. And then, building exhibits of what the original garage were from permit number 18-40. Those were not part of the packet.
What was the date on the final inspection?
8/28/18.
That could have been the as-built, with dates on there.
Yeah, I get it.
2/27/18.
So that, no, that was the approval by the city engineer that it can be built in the flood plain.
Yeah, this is just an approval of the...
It's the city engineer's approval, you know, showing that he did the exercise to go through and the elevations.
So that wasn't in our packets, though?
No, those were not, there was a question about, were there construction drawings, what was there, and so I put things that I thought would show, you know, what the original approvals were, and then the site plan showing the paver units, that was the proposed pool plan with the lot coverage to show what the conditions are today.
Does Andrew believe, looking at this, this was all done at one time, Dan?
I'm sorry, the...
Andrew saw this, right? Andrew Hart?
I've gone out there, I, the roof structure that's currently there was built at a singular time, it's not like he took the existing roof and added, and this is, because the original roof system we know was too high, that was involved in that discussion. I measured it, it's 15 feet, so the overhang in the current roof structure, in my opinion, were constructed at the same time.
Okay, and so I feel that's the hardship, where he's given permission by the city to do this, and that allows the variance. That's my personal opinion, as opposed to, if someone else came in here with the exact same case, shows that you were given permission, you have a document, gave you final inspection, someone happens to have the exact same hardship showing that way, which I doubt can happen, then we have to give it to them.
What do you mean with doubt it's gonna happen, that there was a verbal approval?
Not even a verbal approval, a sign off on the final...
We have many cases like this, we have many cases, right?
But not necessarily on zoning issues, where we have them as like procedural issues, like today, I discovered a demolition permit that he didn't require the applicant to get a Cook County IEPA permit, which put the city at risk. That's not a zoning issue, that's, I came across another one, where his plan review was literally, don't follow, you have to follow the International Residential Code. Okay, it was a project that had nothing to do with the residential code, it was a local administration, so I think some of the reviews were lacking.
Okay, what are the opinions of the commissioners on that?
Let me ask you a question, as far as going back to, like, the chicken structures that supposedly they got verbal approval to do, where they're at, and how they're...
They were not given verbal approval, those were statements that, I was called, and basically they said, well, you said I could have chickens, so if I can have chickens, I can have a structure. Lot coverage was always required for those structures. We've asked, you know, to have structured, we've asked for permits on structures, we've got record of people getting permits for those structures, it's just a lot of people, when they make a call, can I have chickens? Yeah, just keep it off of lot lines, okay? Or whatever that was said before here, you know, I can't go back to them, but in the last 10 years, we've been very clear in what we've said. Now, I've taken steps administratively and organizationally where this should not happen again, I would love to say that it can't, but I do have to tell you that my inspector today caught this because he was paying attention. You know, just didn't take it for, oh, it's an existing structure, he goes, hold on, saying, it doesn't match what was approved.
What's your opinion? So, I don't know what we're worried about the legal for, but he didn't even talk to the inspector, his builder talked to the inspector, so that's like hearsay. And I'm not saying that anybody's lying, but this could have been put on after too, it doesn't necessarily mean that he said it was approved and then, you know, the next week. But I really don't, I know this area, there's not much back there, you know, I'm sure he's gonna keep, is this tying up the pool permit?
What we did is, we said, because the pool is an approved structure, as long as he applied for the variation, we would grant the pool permit.
So he can work if he's, I think that was pretty...
But it was, I wasn't gonna grant him a permit unless he applied for the variation to try and correct the zoning deficiency.
So what were the original, but the original plans didn't have that additional 320 or 360, correct?
No, that's correct.
So it's, it is hearsay, because the final could have been what was submitted and not the addition.
I don't disagree, I'm, part of my position is, is looking at other permit documents and other stuff of the failure to get requirements in the actions of that individual, doing field approvals without requiring backups. And could we sit here and do this, could the ZBA deny it? And then, I have, my position is, comes out as a denial, the council deny it, and then we'll be...
Janet, what do you think? Court's over. So Dan, let me ask you this real quick, I don't mean to interrupt, but you had said something, if it goes, if this guy goes to hardship and he goes to legal, then it is really...
It's a very expensive...
Very expensive. So is that, I mean, is that something that we should consider as well?
No, the question comes down to is, he said estoppel is gonna be his legal argument if he should choose to do it, and the likelihood is he'll win.
Could I ask you, I don't know what that is.
What's estoppel?
Estoppel is a legal term that basically means that somebody has relied on actions of the government to go forward with the project, and then the government come back after it, so it stops us from proceeding with our actions to deny it, so...
But he never did hear from our inspector that he could do that, he said that.
But...
He said his builder said it, and then said it to him.
And again, I wish I had, when I called, talked to my inspector, I always says, yeah, I remember talking to him about the roof, that's all I'm gonna get. I don't have, could I say, go up there and say, prove dates, based on what, and then it's gonna be, at the end of the day...
Here's, I'm just final cut, because we've been at it for a while, I think we have different opinions.
Let me say one other thing, so, back to your question, Inspector Daryl, I remember Daryl, this is a noticeable thing different, like, you would come out there when he does a final inspection, you'd see the overhang. If it's different from the plan, it's something you would see, it's not like something that's hidden, or it's off by two square feet, this is a noticeable thing.
Especially if he caught eight inches too high.
Yeah, exactly, so if, to that lens of the story, Daryl finally signed off on this. That's, I don't disagree with, I believe what he's saying is true, that this was, he was given permission to do this. I don't think he went and did this afterwards or stuff, I think he was given permission to do this, it was a wrong permission to give, but he was given permission to do. I feel that's the case here.
And I hate to see an upstanding, looks like an upstanding resident, get hurt by a wrongful decision of a city employee, I would never want to see that.
And we're talking about 80 square feet?
Right.
And one building.
Yeah, and one building, correct. Which I think you can get around.
I, I think that, I think that, because there's legal ramifications to this, there's another body that looks at this, which is the city council, I wanna put in the, the condition that city council watches this meeting, before they, before they go in into the, into their meeting. We've had cases with the chickens where we've spent two years in here, listening to countless testimony, and the city council says that they had not enough time to make a decision. The chicken decision has still not been made, I want them to watch this meeting.
Oh, I'm, as much as putting that condition in, that's not, I don't believe that, they, some of them will watch it, but we can't do the upside. I, if you as chairman wanna come and give your opinion on the actions, you have just as much right to come at that meeting and say why your, why your thoughts are the way they are.
No, I want, no, no, it's not, it's not that, I want them to make an educated decision.
Oh, believe me, I wanna make them, and I've had...
Again, it's not, it's not, the, the object here is not denying the applicant, the object is protecting the city.
Correct, and the attorney will, he and I have talked about this two occasions, and he said this is, he's, he put the memo together to the council as to why this is this way as well, the, the legal issues. At this point in time, I, I've said my piece, I said where I believe in Neil, it's not out of what's happened in other cases for that individual giving this approval, in my opinion.
I could see it having a bigger issue if this was fifteen hundred square feet, we're talking about eighty. And I think...
And one structure.
Many moons ago, I was on the other side of the thousand six, exact same thing, because my plant burned.
We are talking about three hundred six...
When the city hall burnt down.
So if it was five hundred, it's a big difference?
It's a mess.
It's not, the biggest problem, the biggest problem is, what we are approving, what we are approving, is we are approving based on the hardship of hearsay, that's what we are approving, and that sets precedence for every other case. Every other case that comes to this board with, with the zoning case, I don't know how many there are, hopefully there is none, hopefully we're done with this, hopefully Gale was the one, and then the Suro was the other one, we never see this again. But if any other case comes into this, if we approve it on a hardship of hearsay, we have to approve all the other ones.
So why don't, why don't we...
Are there any way around that?
Ask to continue it and have the attorney revisit, based on our discussion tonight? I mean, I think, I think the easiest, easiest way would be to get a variation that would clean it up from his perspective, but I, I can see both sides, you know, if the, if the final approval is a document, you know, a legitimate document that says this job is done, it was done in conformance with what our, with what our inspector saw, then why do we have to even go through this? I see that argument, but I also see somebody that, he's bent over backwards to comply with, with all of the regulations, with, you know, the drainage issues, the roof, the height.
Absolutely.
I think he's done everything he can to comply, and he's still trying to comply, so, again, in my view, it's almost like it's grandfathered in, even though it's a little bit different, you're, you're giving the approval based on, it's non-conforming, but he was given the approv, approval of the inspector, based on the fact that the roof is integral, I think it was done at the same time, so I see that, that argument as well. So it's, it's a tough one, and I don't wanna set a precedent, which, and every case that we see here is individual, and I think that all of the evidence here is not gonna be the same evidence as presented in another case. So I would, I'm leaning towards going ahead with the variation with all the conditions, they can't do any modifications to, to the building in any way, that he can't do any other structures, the concrete pad is already gone, correct? So that's not a condition. So he's, he's got what he's got, and that's all he can get, and somebody else buys the property, they can't, you know, they're not gonna get the eleven hundred square feet in one building, because if they make a, a change to that building, then they have to comply.
Would, if, if the structure was not seven twenty, say it was smaller, with that shed roof, that added to the smaller structure, and it came up to seven twenty, that would have been approved, but the piers would have had to meet the, would the piers for, for that roof had to meet the same engineering that, that the foundation did with the heli coil?
I think that anything that's not built to the, to the plans that were submitted for permit is not approved. But anyways, I think we've, I think we've heard enough.
I just heard something that I, I wanna make sure I understood, Commissioner Saber's position, is that, would, would you like a better response from the attorney on the issue of legal nonconformity? Because it was approved at the time, it then became legal nonconformity.
I don't, I would say that that would help to clarify this.
I just wanna make sure I understand what you were asking.
Yes, and if there's some other way to handle this, like, if it is legal nonconforming, then, again, we don't need a variance, in, in most cases, if it's been done, say, you know, historically, before the code was done. Well, if this was done historically, when there was a decision made that shouldn't have been made, is that the same kind of argument?
Yeah, so at, at what point can we call it a legal nonconforming basis, just as a, a, a poor decision and a wrong decision by a city employee that allowed, and that he took at face value?
Correct.
Can we, can we vote on it today and have the legal present at the, at the council meeting and answer these questions to the councilman?
Um, I think it would be, you can choose to vote if you want to vote, I don't know if that, his, his, he, he will be prepared to ask a question if one of the council people or if I bring it up in the report, to ask the question, you know, that the ZBA wanted to consider, does this make it illegal, can I conform, and I'll have the answer beforehand, and he can respond, at his point, just say, yes, it was asked about, and no, it had to be a variation, or, and this is why it was either approved or denied.
But I would rather have that answer before I voted on it, then.
Well, can we, can you, can we vote with the condition, if it does become legal nonconforming?
Once you guys...
Let's say we vote yes to this, or it becomes legal nonconforming, the option legal conform is would, would take away a variance.
But it's not holding him up to do anything.
No.
Just for the bag, he's gotta come back.
The, the, once you, once you make a vote, that's the recommendation that goes forward, it's in the condition, the conditions have to be, the conditions have to be on what the applicant does, not what they do compared to what we do.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, it, it's, it's a point of understand where you'd like to be able to, yeah...
So basically, we have three things to vote on, one, approve it with the variance, two, take it back to legal, table it, or three, deny it.
Correct.
Well, actually, actually, this is all a moot point, because the applicants are here, so he can't continue it.
No, you, you as the chairperson have the ability, or, or any one of the zoning board members can raise a question that you're not, don't have the information necessary to make a final decision, whether the applicant's here or not.
Okay, okay.
You guys have that right.
Always been the applicant.
Usually, it's the applicant, because it's gonna go down, but if yours, if you're at a point where you're struggling with, and don't feel that you have the information necessary to take a vote tonight, one of you could make a motion that you'd like to table it, then, if it gets a, if it gets a second, you take a vote, up or down, on tabling, if you, if it goes up and it doesn't get a second...
If we don't vote on this, then the, then the option is to continue it, and, and we go, we go to the, to legal?
Right.
And we ask, and we ask, we ask him to change the, the nature of the request?
Yes, because a legal nonconforming does not need a variation.
And he doesn't have to come back for all.
Wouldn't have to come back at all.
And then, then he wouldn't have to come back, I'd advise that he comes to the meeting when you actually make the vote on the recommendation, because if we table it, we still have to come back, period.
Why? If it's legal nonconforming, doesn't need a vari, variation, why do we come back for to close the meeting?
Because we have to close the meeting.
Okay.
It has to be agenticized, it has to have a closure.
Okay.
Okay, so, that would be the...
Okay, now what happens, so what happens if we, if we go to the legal and he says, no, that is not the case, then we come back just to vote on what we will be voting on today?
Correct, and it, and if there's any additional, and I'll look to see if I can find any additional information, but I doubt that it exists.
It's not holding up his permit for the pool?
No, because he, the condition of getting the pool permit, which is a permissible structure, was that he had to apply for this to try and correct the zoning violation.
It's a zoning violation, so he's in...
Yeah.
Right, okay, so it's not that big of a deal?
No, it's, it's just, you know, he didn't realize it was a zoning violation, we discovered it was a zoning violation, you have to either correct it by removing it, which he's made the argument, and I can't dispute it, that it was approved by staff, okay? So that was the hardship presented, he took the face value of the inspector's word, so he did what he was supposed to do, he applied for the variation, so I granted him the permit on the pool.
You said you had a helical inspection report?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, do you know if that shows the helical piers for the overhang?
No, I'll have to go back and read it, so I...
He said that the overhang does not have helic...
He didn't know.
He, he doesn't believe it, I don't believe, because the helical pier installer would have been there to put in the piers that were outlined by the structural engineer for the foundation to carry the load-bearing weight of the building. That, that afterthought on the roof, in that area, what are we looking at? Maybe thirty pounds?
So it doesn't, this proves his point, but it definitely proves it, right? If he has helic there, then it definitely proves it.
Yeah.
If it doesn't have, it doesn't disprove his point, but it just might give him a little more assurance of, of...
I'll, I'll, I'll look, I'll, I'll ask the attorney, if that's, if I'm understanding where you want me to go with this, if we continue it, ask the, get an opinion on the position of legal nonconforming, and as, another look at this. Secondarily, it'll give me a chance to go through the files, and I'll pull the information on the helical pier inspections, and the inspections leading up to the final, and then get that out to you, and then we will have a brief discussion of this, I'll inform Joey that, that you guys have decided to table it one month because looking for additional information, and it will come back and will be the first case under old business.
Is there no drawing at all of this?
No, but that's, there should have been.
No, I'm saying now, should there be, like, now that we're approving it, should we know what we're approving, or is that, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I've, I've got pictures in the engineer if I, if I...
You can sketch it real quick, it's pretty straightforward.
And if...
Well, I mean, we don't even know what kind of piers it is, I don't make a difference, I'm just asking.
If he looks, if you look at this...
I know, they measured my piers when they came out before we poured.
Yeah, and, and based on, I'm having a hard time, because for a period of time, there was incomplete records on a lot of stuff, and I'm finding, you know, I'm going back and doing, we're doing this whole records retention program, and I'm going through files going, okay, this was a, yeah, an oversight, he missed an inspection, or he didn't do a report on here, but it had nothing to do with zoning, and it didn't, at the end of the day, didn't have anything to do with the overall project that we're finding, it's just a missed document. Here, I can ask, we can always ask them, then go out, we can do is, dig by the side of the pier to verify that it went forty-two inches, if we wanted to be that...
No, I'm just asking, I, I have no problem.
My suggestion is...
I wouldn't disturb.
I think we propose two things, one, we approve it, or two, we continue it, and then we'll vote.
He was gonna take it.
And then, like, he can still go to...
That's not how it works, if we have a motion to continue, that's, that's where we're, if you have a, if there is a motion, if there is a motion to continue, I'd like to hear that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, can we have two motions?
Hold on.
We have to vote on each one, so it can be denied to continue it.
So you could deny the motion to, so, so Janet, do I have a motion to continue from Janet?
Can we start with the other one first?
No.
I'll second that motion.
To continue it.
So there's a motion on the floor to continue, uh...
Scott seconded it.
Okay, Scott seconded, so we need a, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
No.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Saber.
Aye.
Commissioner, Chairman Kemp.
Aye.
All right, what I would ask on this is, I have those two points that I'm gonna look at, is there anything else, and I'll let you think the next day or two to send to me what you think you would like answered, is there any other information that you'd like answered?
I would like to know, historically, how is it handled if this comes up? It's gotta come up in other municipalities and other situations where there was something that was approved wrongly, or that a staff member didn't follow through on something, so it was a mistake of the staff, and how is that handled?
All right.
Okay, can we make another motion to approve this?
Uh, no, because it's continued.
It's continued.
If they, if the vote would have been the other way, or it didn't get a second, then they would have triggered the next vote.
I got you, okay.
Okay, the next item is, I don't know.
Communications.
Communications.
Get your filings with the Cook County in by the first domain, otherwise they're gonna start charging you for not doing your economic interest.
Oh, I did mine already.
Please, go online, because they're being very...
Sixth of Tom. They just keep saying fifth of Tom, sixth of Tom.
I got the sixth one today, I finally did mine today, so, please do that, because this, you'll be on the hook for the fees for not filing.
So what's the web page again?
They've got a link, I don't know what it is, it's on the Edge Point link, it's about four lines.
It's not like I can remember a website anymore.
You should have it in the email, John, they, because they give you a, a file number that you need to, you need to file on that, that number, so there should be, it should be in your email.
An update on the cell tower?
Actually, they, they were out working a couple months ago, I'm not sure exactly where they are, but they, they got it up, and they found they had some more issues with it, took it back down, then their crane broke, so, and of course, they picked the coldest days in February to do the work, so...
Okay.
Other than that, still no word from council, what their plans are with the chicken recommendation.
With the, with the what?
Chicken recommendation.
How about the fence at, um, one east...
He's, he's picked up his permit.
Oh, so they approved it, the council approved it?
Based on, with all the conditions?
Mm-hmm, yep, and I went out and verified, and he cleaned up his plan, we got, we rolled it out, and he cleaned up the number, we were, he was only off by four feet to the tree.
Okay.
You know, it wasn't, it wasn't as bad as I thought it was, and we'll...
How about the fire station addition renovation, when will that start?
Hopefully, they are going to be on the May twelfth, city council meeting for an intergovernmental agreement, we have come to terms with them that they will be building additional parking in part of the commons area between the police department, in return, we will be picking up the excess stormwater detention that MWRD is requiring they have, and it would be a shared parking space that would accommodate their staffing needs and additional parking for the PD that we need, so it took a while to get to that understanding, but that agreement is going up to the city council on May twelfth, and with that, at the same time, it'll be their approvals for the variations. But it, it was, it was good, everybody's on the same page, and at the end of the day, we get needed additional parking to serve both the firehouse, and it does not limit the PD for future expansion if need be, to the east. So thank you for the question, I totally, totally forgot.
Good.
Anything else? Can I give a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-five?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?